Good morning. We will call the Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 meeting to order. Please stand if you are able and join me in saying the Poitiers Allegiance.
The Poitiers Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom for all.
Thank you. We are continuing with our mitigation efforts to minimize the spread of COVID-19. And while we do have some staff here in the meeting room, we are offering our meetings via Zoom per code section 21.8, point one, that allows us to do so. With that, I'm going to ask for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Faisal and seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Kevin's aye. Next, we have public comment number one. This is the comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the meeting room or on Zoom that would like to make public comments? If so, either raise your hand on Zoom or hit, I think it's star nine to unmute yourself. And I'll wait a few seconds. Let me kind of do a check here to make sure. It's not seeing none. We will close public comment number one, and we will move on to the public hearing items. First of all, I would like to welcome all of the elected officials, department heads and staff who are joining us here today. There are some that are here in the meeting room, and I see many of you that are joining me on Zoom. And with that, we'll move on and have a presentation by Lisa Markley on the FY2022 proposed budget information.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Almost to the end of this process. Okay, we are at the end of the process. So the proposed budget that you're going to vote on today was published in all three official newspapers on 3/11 as required by law. The budget that you adopt today cannot be higher than the published amount, but it can be lowered at this public hearing. There are handouts available that include some of these charged along with the proposed FY22 salaries of department heads and elected officials, which do include salary increases. I'm going to start with evaluations because that's where we start when we put our budget together. We did see valuation increases. These are what all the taxing entities, taxing authorities base their levies on, okay? So for countywide, we increased 4.2%, and for rural, we increased 3.72%. Then the rollbacks are applied for residential. It is 55.0743. So if you have $100,000 house, you're taxed on $55,074 of it. For agricultural properties, the taxable value is 81. The rollback for agriculture is 81.4, so you're taxed on $81,400 of it if it's a $100,000 property. Commercial and industrial rollback is at 90%, and the multi-residential is 71 and a quarter. Obviously, that most impact on that is in games because of apartment buildings that were formerly classified as commercial. The overview, what we did for, for put this budget together, we had departmental work sessions in mid-January. Those are all on the website for anybody that wants to go and review them. We put in, there are four bargaining units, and they are in negotiations. I think three of them might have settled, but I'm not positive on that at this point in time. Irregardless, we did budget 2% cost of living adjustment for everything across the board. Health insurance premiums are budgeted to increase by 10%, and we included in this budget funding three new positions, two in facilities and one in conservation. The asset contribution increased by 5%. Asset is the Analysis Social Services Evaluation Team. And we did a capital, we have a capital improvement plan that will be presented at next week's board meeting. I'm sorry about the error on that. I was understanding it's going to be this week's. So there are, there are numerous projects included in that, and we had an economic development, we budgeted for economic development, which included funding for urban renewal, small communities, and home-based island. We are under, in 2019, Senate File 634 required a new public hearing of taxes from the general and the rural levies were being proposed to exceed 2% over the current year. With the increase in valuation accessing, accessing the $3.50 maximum for the general fund and also the supplemental fund, the dollars generated automatically lead to more than a 2% increase. Since levy rates are what property taxes are based on, the new requirement is somewhat misleading. We've had this conversation many times. Overall, Story County lowered the levy rate. It's the lowest since 2000, 2001 budget. You did pass the resolution by a 3-0 vote, and also that extended our deadline to 331 when they passed that Senate file. During the budget process, a thorough review was done of the impact on expenses and revenues during the pandemic. Many departments have low, could lower their training and continuing education because many of them were canceled. Fuel usage was down, some revenues were lower, and overtime costs were lower. The levying funds for, for the county are limited in certain ways. For countywide, which is the general fund in Story, in Story County's case, countywide means every taxpayer in Story County pays this. The supplemental fund, in order to access the supplemental levy, we must be at the $3.50 max in the general fund. The supplemental levy is proposing to decrease from $1 to $0.98 per thousand this year. The impact on that one is usually increases in liability insurance, health insurance. So those are the driving factors as to why that, what rate we put in there. The county services and mental health levy is calculated in a totally different manner than any other levy. The rate is capped per region based on the population in those regions. For our region, the per capita limit is $35.50, which translates to 3.4 million for Story County. The region, however, sets that rate, and they recommended 1.8 million, which is $19 per capita from Story County. So it gets a long way around, but that is a levy of 34 cents, 35 cents per thousand, and that's down from 50 cents last year. The debt service levy is based on certified debt that the county has. There's no new debt being incurred in this FY22 proposal. So right now, we, the debt we have is secondary roads projects and the Story County project. So we're levying 12 cents, 13, about 13 cents per thousand, which is an increase of 10 cents. The rural basic is paid by all residents in the incorporated area. The levy we're proposing this year is $3.04, and that's a decrease of 20 cents. Tax askings in this proposed budget are higher by 630,000, and the overall levy rate is lower by 7 cents for countywide and 27 cents for rural. We budget by, the county's budget by service area for revenues and expenses. So the overall revenues for this proposed budget are down 1.13% from the certified 21 budget, not the reestimated. The budgeted revenues for Story County, 66% of our revenues come from property taxes. 19% come from intergovernmental. That's going to include road use tax, state replacement taxes, commercial and industrial replacements, state and federal grants. 6% is coming from local option sales tax. 5% is from fees for services, and 2% from tip and 2% from interest in rentals. That's what we put together in this budget. Again, we're budgeting by service area. So our expenses by service area, this doesn't change a lot every year. It shifts a little bit, but overall, the expenses are down 5.6%. And 33% of our budget, which is 15.3 million, goes to public safety and legal, public safety legal and includes services for the sheriff and the attorney's office. 17% or 7.7 million of the budget is classified as administration. It includes facilities, management tall buildings, information technology, the Board of Supervisors budget, county liability insurance, and both the auditor and treasurer's management services. 16% of our budget or 7.6 million goes to roads and transportation, secondary roads department. 10% of our budget, which is 4.7 million, is county environment and education. That funds conservation, animal control, planning and development, IRVM, the county libraries, and the urban renewal projects. 4% of our budget, which is 1.8 million, is for mental service, mental health services. That includes everything, the local and the regional. 6% of our budget or 2.8 million is represents health and social services. That includes your environmental health, community services, VA, juvenile court, the DHS local office, and many of the asset services. 6% of our budget, which is another 2.8, is for capital projects. That's going to include both county capital and secondary roads capital. 5% or 2.1 is for government services that includes the recorder, the auditor election side, and the treasurer motor vehicle side. And 3% of our budget or 1.5 is for land and debt service this year. This chart shows the current year distribution of dollars by taxing authority. We'll take a look on the following slide at the individual tax statement and where your dollars go, but this gives a snapshot of the overall dollars generated by each taxing authority. Schools generate 47, get 47% of our tax dollars. Cities 25%, county 17%, and then all other entities are below 5%. This chart for Story County is comparable to statewide information from the Iowa State Association of Counties. The last financial review they have out there is, overview they have out there is 2019, but schools were at 42%, counties statewide, cities at 29%, and counties at 22%. So if you, when you're going to pay your taxes, the breakdown of how these dollars are distributed is represented here. I used a Hudson resident as an example today. This is based on last year's city levy rate, as their budgets don't get certified to us until 331. The school budgets get certified on August, or April 15th, so neither of those two budget, neither of those two levies are included in this yet. So we have a house assessed, a home assessed at $100,000. The taxable value, as we talked about, would be $55,000. Your annual taxes, if you live in the city of Hudson would be $2,100. Out of that, Ballard, the school district in this case, would receive 50, 51% of the dollars. City would get 31%. County 13%, area school 1%, and then the other includes ag extension, county assessor, Story County Hospital. Those would all be a total of 4% of your budget. If you look in Grant Township and Ballard School District, so it's the same school district we're comparing, the pie would look like the one on the right, which your total taxes would be $1,668. The difference would be the school would get 65% of that, and the county 26% of that because it's the unincorporated areas.
Can you explain the difference between area school and school?
Area schools, DMAC?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
What are we getting on backfill?
What are we getting on backfill? We are budgeting to get, let me get to the revenue detail here. State replacements, $1,036,000.
FY22 budget.
Mm-hmm. That's for state replacements against levy taxes, and then other state tax replacements is another 667,000, so 1.7 million.
What's the other?
It could be, it could be mobile home taxes, those types of things that are not listed out separately as a replacement against levy taxes.
Okay. Thank you. And mental health, that levy rate reduced from the 22 down to 19, if I'm correct for this figure, 22?
Per capita?
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, I did, I did update that because I had time after they told us, so I went ahead and did it.
Yeah, that's what I thought that you, that you did.
Right.
Any other questions, supervisors? Okay, before we move on for public comment done up, we first need to go through, look at Resolution 21-68, the elected officials' salaries. Matt, we don't want to interrupt.
Second one. Oh, no, that's just a handout, basically, of summary.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was confused. So Resolution 21-68, you did act on the Compensation Board's recommendations, so I went ahead and put that together in the resolution form that's required. So the original proposal is on the top that the Compensation Board met on December 16th and made the following recommendations. And then on 216 of 21, Board of Supervisors acted to lower that recommendation. So this is what your lowering looks like.
Any questions or requests? All right. Is there a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 21-68 for elected officials' salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Faisal and seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Kevin's aye. Next, we will move on to the public hearing for Resolution 21-69, which is the, this the year 2022 budget that Lisa just presented on. If anyone would like to speak at the public hearing, I ask that you please state your name and your address, and I will give you a couple minutes to make your comments. And in order to do that, you just need to raise your hand via Zoom or if you're in the office or in the meeting room here to come up front here to speak, or you hit star nine to unmute yourself. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for comments. I do see, is there someone who raised a hand, or is that just the raise hand function that I've seen there?
Yeah.
Raise your hand.
It would be a different sign.
Yeah. When I'm on Zoom with my computer, it comes up differently, so. Anyone who'd like to make public comments during this time on this year 22 budget? One more second and say again, to unmute yourself, you hit star nine, or to do the raise hand function on Zoom if you'd like to make comments. Not seeing anything? I'm just double checking. All right, then we will close the public hearing. And I'll ask if there's any further discussion. Or a motion from the supervisor?
I'm not the approval of our Resolution 21-69 for the FY22 budget as presented and certified taxes as published, which includes assignment of funds as follows. Announce the general fund for specific purposes, announce the ending world fund as unallocated local option sales tax, and to direct the auditor to properly certify and file the budget and certificate of taxes.
Second. It's been moved by Merkin and seconded by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Kevin's aye. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you to everyone in your department that has put this together. Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on to agency reports, and we've got first up is Mary Greeley Medical Center Home Health Services. So I believe that would be Les.
Good morning, Les.
Good morning. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. And I believe there is a PowerPoint for you today that they said they would bring up for me.
Just a moment, Les will have it up.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, it's like this, the other one. She's got two of them on there.
I confused you by the titles. I apologize. The handout that she showed that was up first, that just gives you, I'll talk about the numbers today, but I just thought that would give you something to hold in your hand or to look at, refer back to. It also, what that handout does is it lays out where that funder source comes from because sometimes that is a little confusing, and so that way, that gives you an idea of the funder source and the number of folks that we do serve in Story County. So again, good morning, everyone. I'm pretty excited to come and talk about something other than COVID, although I will, we will talk a little bit about COVID and where we are in the, in the county. So as you know, we are a department of Mary Greeley. I have home health hospice as well as Story County Public Health. The next slide will show you, it talks about our service area, and we actually serve a 50-mile radius. So when you look at this, we go up into, you know, Iowa Falls over to Fort Dodge, come down around into Jefferson. We do dip down into Poe County, although we don't serve a lot of people in that area. We probably only go about as far south as Ankeny. Then we come up into Marshalltown, and then you're back up into Iowa Falls. So I know you're interested in the people that we serve in Story County, so I will bring that forward today, but just a reminder that we do have a rather large service area. Our mission is to advance health through specialized care and personal touch, and our vision is very simple, and that is to be the best. The next slide we'll talk about, we'll start with home health services, and we do have our skilled nursing service in the home as well as therapy services in the home. Our therapy services consist of physical therapy, occupational therapy, as well as speech. When we're looking at a daily average census for our skilled staff, which includes nursing as well as our therapies, we average about 136 clients. This past fiscal year, we did serve 269 folks in Story County. Overall, all of our services had probably anywhere from a 10 to a 10, 20% decrease in relationship to numbers, and that was really due to COVID. When COVID first started, you know, a lot of people were anxious about having us come into their home, and, and we understand that. We did put all of those mitigations in place as well as things to protect our staff, and we also began to use some telehealth options. So although we didn't use that a lot, it was something that we could use, and it did help with some of that transition until, again, people started to feel comfortable for us coming back into their homes. Our homemaker service, we have two types of homemaker service. We have environmental, which is really that. It's people that come into the home, they can help do different types of cleaning, they can help with meals, they can also go buy groceries or those types of things for individuals. And then we have our personal care homemaker program, which is, we offer a healthcare aide, will go out into the home and provide any kind of personal care that's needed for that individual. With that type of a service, there is this 60-day oversight of a nurse that goes out to evaluate the plan of care and to make sure that those services are appropriate for, at that level of care. Over this past year, we have served 166 Story County residents. Our average daily census there is about 121 clients. We do an annual survey every year, and we just got that completed, and we had a 58% response rate. Once I get it all tallied up, then I'll be happy to share with you what those responses were, but it, it came across very favorable that people are definitely benefiting from our services. What we've done also this past year is, a year ago, when I spoke with you, we had started a new position, and it's just a homemaker position, and it was very successful. We were able to increase the number of homemaker clients that we had up until COVID hit, and then again, things backed down for a little bit, but we knew after COVID that we could continue to grow this program. And so what we did is we hired another homemaker. And what's different between the homemaker and the healthcare aide is really their level of training. A healthcare aide can do any kinds of personal care, and they have more of a certified nursing assistant background, whereas the homemaker does not provide any personal care, they provide strictly those environmental homemaker needs. So we just hired another full-time homemaker, and we are able now to start to increase our business again and keeping them both busy. So we're very pleased about that. And the thing I think it's important to remember about our homemaker service, especially during this COVID time, it's not always those support things that we do for the people, although they're beneficial, but really it's that personal interaction that our folks have with our clients that I think where we see the greatest benefit, as do they. The last program, Transitional and Surgical Care Program. This is a program we work in conjunction with Mary Greeley. Transitional care, we look at diagnosis with congestive heart failure, COPD, or chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, sepsis, if they've had a myocardial infarction, pneumonia. And then the surgical clients that we see are people that have had colon surgery, hip, back, or knee surgery. And what we do is we do a one-time visit out in the home, and it helps, we evaluate to see how they're doing, what's the, is there any safety concerns in their home? Do they have that follow-up appointment scheduled? And, you know, do they have transportation? It's also a time for my staff, they're very good at looking, are there some barriers there, or are there some other services that the client could benefit from? And then we're able to visit with them about that as well. What this does is it actually decreases that rehospitalization rate as well as the infection rates related to surgeries. Currently, we have seen 463 clients this year. It is down again a little bit because surgeries were on hold there for a bit at Mary Greeley in relationship to COVID. But again, things have picked back up, and we are busy as ever. The next slide is our hospice services. So again, with our hospice, we have in-home hospice, as that is provided by nurses, but we also have a variety of other services that both are as that is provided by nurses, but we also have a variety of other services that both are in the home as well as in our Israel Family Hospice House that's located in South Dakota. We have such things as massage therapy. A couple years ago, we added music therapy, which has been very successful. If there is some opportunities for some physical therapy or occupational therapy, we can provide those services as well. I just cross over some of my team from the home health side, as well as there is social work involved with our hospice clients as well. When we're looking at our home hospice, we average about 26 patients a day. And in the Israel Family Hospice House, we average about three per day. When we're looking at Story County residents, really, our home hospice, last fiscal year saw 155 individuals in Story County. Again, the home hospice service has been down, and that was really due to the limitation of nursing homes, of allowing staff to come into nursing homes. We were able to provide nursing service in those nursing homes, but they were not able to get all the other benefits of hospice. That sense has opened up, and we are now able to provide all the services for our hospice clients in the nursing homes. For our Israel Family Hospice House, we really needed to adjust in relationship to visitor policy. We were a little more lenient than maybe what you would have found from nursing homes as well as the hospital, but it's really a different kind of setting. And we wanted to, you know, the family to have a good experience in relationship to their loved one. We did allow two visitors at a time to see their loved one. And then what we did is we had a list of 10 folks that they felt like were important for this individual to see, and then we would rotate them through. We didn't allow, and we still don't, allow people to be in our waiting areas or in our family rooms, but we do allow them to be outside as the weather gets nice. That's one thing about our house is we have a beautiful garden that will be coming up here in the spring, and people can spend time out there and then rotate through to see their loved one. You know, that protects our staff as well as the other family and patients that are in our hospice house. The next program is really is bereavement. We served 81 Story County residents this past year in relationship to bereavement. There's different components to that. So there's a caregiver and family. We offer support groups as well, and then community programs. So this took on a different look as well. Mike, he offered virtual bereavement programs during this time. And now, we're going to be able to hold a small group of no greater than five, because we have a room at the hospice house where he can actually bring those individuals in, and we can social distance. They'll of course wear masks, and they can have an in-person bereavement support group. People are very excited about that, and he is going to be holding more than one at a time because of that. We also this year did a virtual, the Tree of Love. I don't know if any of you have participated in that, but if you've had a loved one pass away in the past year, we've always done a program, usually in November, early December, around Christmas time, to provide that extra support. Again, we did this program virtual, and we had 82 views, which is actually more views than we had people attend the previous year. So we were excited about that. We also offer the We Honor Veterans program, and it's really just recognition for that vet at the end of life. And since we started that program a year ago, we've had 39 veterans that we have had recognized. In addition to that, Mike also will make home visits if it is requested, as well as he does many phone calls in relationship to support in the bereavement program. The next slide. Then is my department that's been in the limelight this past year, Story County Public Health. It's really changed for us this past year. When we started clinics, we do senior health clinics, and we were doing immunization clinics as well. Our senior health clinics were put on hold in March when COVID hit. And the reason for that is, again, we have a very small department. I have two nurses, as you know, Sherry Zuck and Teresa Ferrari, and we really needed to focus our time on COVID. But in addition to that, we provide a lot of these services in assisted living facilities. And again, those types of facilities were shut down. We go to Heartland, that facility was shut down. Now, as things begin to open up, I assure you that, again, we will start looking at how we can provide these clinics, and provide them in a safe manner. But prior to March, we were able to see 939 clients from July to February. We've continued with our immunization clinics. We hold clinics here in our office during the week, and also two evenings a week for anybody that wants to bring their children and to get immunizations or any immunizations for themselves as well. We have served 158 Story County clients, and that alludes to 348 different vaccines for them. This does not include COVID at this time. I can see truly down the road, that may be something that we'll be adding to our general immunization clinics. We also do disease investigation surveillance, for instance, tuberculosis. It seems like we always have at least one or two active TB cases in the county that we're providing direct observation therapy for. Of this, we have served 68 individuals and provided over 781 hours of service. Again, this does not include any of our COVID work. Then in July, we became part of Coalition A in relationship to emergency management. They, we were in Coalition B. They did some restructuring of the different counties, and now we're a part of Coalition A, which has been a good move. I think we are in with Polk County and Dallas County, so some of the other counties that are a little bit bigger, and it's nice we can visit with them and learn things from them. Again, really, truly, our focus this past year has been on COVID and our emergency response to that virus. The next slide. Just want to talk a little bit about some of the successes, opportunities, and some of the challenges that we've had. Just recently, we have had two successful DIA surveys for home health in November of 2020, and we just completed our hospice DIA survey in March 2021. These are always surprise surveys. They come once every three years. Again, they were both successful, which is always a good thing, and it just, it's one of the ways that we do to remain certified for our Medicare dollars. Another task that we've completed is, or almost completed, I should say, is the 2020 Community Needs Assessment. So Story County Public Health, we lead a group called Squala, Story County Quality Living Alliance. And that is a group that actually works on the community needs assessment. We were, had a great plan. I think I probably brought that to you last year, and we were, we were started, we had done data collection, and we did an analysis from the American Community Survey data, and also we had surveyed 13 key Squala partners. Then we, in addition to that, we surveyed 567 people who actually live in Story County, and we did both in Ames as well as the rural communities. And we had begun focus groups. We were able to complete two focus groups that had 15 key members that attended. We did one in Nevada and one in Zering. We did have an additional one that was scheduled in Maxwell, I believe, but then COVID came, and so we weren't able to complete those. So we really kind of stepped back a little bit. We had this data, and then we reconvened a few months ago and wanted to finish up, but we felt like, you know, that was all pre-COVID. Things in our community maybe have changed since post, since COVID. So we wanted to just reaffirm, were those things still legit, or did, you know, were there some new issues? So what we did is we just put together a panel of 13 Story County Health and Human Service experts and asked them directly these questions. And I have listed up there what the final findings were. Now, we're in the process of finalizing our written report. That's not been completely done yet, and we are also developing a presentation. So once that is completed, then I will ask to come back and visit with you about those findings from the Community Needs Assessment, and again, just review that process that we had. So we feel pretty good about that, and I don't think probably these issues that have shown up would be of any surprise really to any of us, and they really, truly are pretty much the same before and after COVID. One of the challenges that continues for me and my team is staffing. We've had open positions. It seems like nursing positions are a little bit difficult to fill in home health. I'm hoping, again, once COVID kind of settles, that we'll be able to get all of our positions filled with that. Also have kind of had that same experience with hospice. But on a positive side, I have been able to hire eight temporary public health nurses, most of them are retired, that have been helping us with the clinics, and we, they've been very valuable to us, and we've enjoyed working with all of them as well. The next slide, we'll just talk a little bit again about the big challenge that we had this year, of course, was COVID. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update in relationship to where we are in the vaccination process. You guys can see the numbers up there. I did just pull those numbers again this morning. We're up to administering 33,602 total doses. Of those total doses, public health has administered 6,572 of them, which is about 20% of the allocations that we have gotten. Also, it's good news in relationship to those total doses that have been completed for those 65 and older. 7,100 is the number this morning. So we are really looking at over about, about 60% of those individuals that are 60 and older have completed their vaccine. As you know, we have moved on to those folks that are 64 and younger with comorbidities, and a lot of their doing those in our clinics. And if you go to the next slide, it just talks about where you can get your vaccine. So again, the clinics are working on those 64 and younger with comorbidities or some underlying health condition. And again, please keep in mind that you don't need to prove that you have any kind of underlying health condition. You just need to share that with, with these individuals. Or in addition to that, the pharmacies are doing those folks as well. So you go, you just tell them that you have, for instance, high blood pressure, and you'll be able to get your immunization. Iowa State as well has been helping us through this whole process and been a valuable partner to us. They too will be start working on their 64 and under age group. And for we in public health, we've been working on two tier, tier two, which is manufacturing. So we have almost completed all of the schools. We got some boost doses today going out. We'll have all of the schools done by next Tuesday, and that includes Ames, so that's been a big chunk of individuals for us. But we are starting to go out as well to those that are disabled. We will finish up Mosaic next week. Also, manufacturing. The other piece of that, what we've been doing is working with our pharmacy partners to help with those manufacturers. So for instance, New Cara has been helping us with Burke. They've also been helping us, they have three others that have, that they've helped us with. Medicap as well. Hy-Vee is going to be helping us with Sourdine Foss, which is very large. We've been working also with Disease Lab, and they have actually an employee health department, and he's going to help us with that. So we've been working a lot of different angles to try to get as much vaccine in people's arms as we can here in Story County. If people have any questions about what's really going on or what our allocations are, they can always go to the website and click on vaccine distribution, and it will tell them that. I know there's anticipation that the state may open up April 5th. We will wait and see what the governor, how she guides us with that here in the next week, to see if the state is going to get those increased allocations. Today, I do not know what that means for us. I don't know how many increased doses that will be for us, but we will, when we get them, we'll be able to, again, work with our community partners and hold community clinics, if that's what we need, need be. I know we're talking with NESCO to do a community clinic there. Also, Story County Medical, New Cara, want to put together some type of a clinic maybe in Nevada. So we'll just continue to move forward with the vaccine that is allotted to us. The next slide is the end, and as always, we are proud to serve Story County, and we look forward to a upcoming year, and it should be another interesting year, I anticipate. So, questions?
Thank you, Les, for your presentation. And I have a first question, and I'll open it up to my supervisors if they have other questions. I know that you're, I know that you're receiving about 1,600 doses, or that was what you've gotten this week?
Yep.
Have you heard what you're going to get like next week yet? I know you don't usually hear until like a Friday or?
Yeah, that's correct. We actually just got our allocation email today, and I believe it's exactly the same.
Okay, okay.
So I don't, I don't anticipate that to maybe necessarily change until the state gets more vaccine overall.
And then the pharmacies, the majority of pharmacies, they get theirs allocated, it's the federal allocation, so that's not in your 1,600 count?
Well, it's both. So we have been allocating to some of the pharmacies to help us with manufacturing, because honestly, the pharmacies aren't getting that much from the fed, from the federal government as well. I know, for instance, like New Cara in Nevada, they didn't get any this past week. When I've spoken with Hy-Vee, they were only getting maybe 150 doses, each of their Hy-Vee's. So their allocations have been a little bit limited as well. So since we have been allocating some to them to help us with these big manufacturers, so we can get through them quicker.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Les, thank you for everything that you've been doing. I think it's been a real different, difficult year for you. I know you've worked close with the Emergency Management Agency, and I appreciate that and all the help you've given to get information to communities. Just one quick question. Get an number here listed on your next to the last slide, 800-945-8563. Is that your local number?
That is. That's our clinic number here. And they can call in. It's specific to COVID and vaccine. And so if it's something that anybody needs to schedule an appointment with, you know, we'll be able to, to schedule an appointment here in our clinic, or if they need help scheduling somewhere else, we can do that as well.
I haven't looked at the Mary Greeley slash Public Health website lately. Is that number on there?
Yes, it should be. And I'll double, I'll double check, Linda, when we get off, because it wasn't, but I know I talked to Steve, and so I'll double check that to get on there.
Okay, great if it was. Thank you.
Any additional?
Yeah, I want to say thank you also, Les, for all that you've been doing and your team has been doing. Can you tell us again what the status of those who are over 65, like the percentage that you think?
Yep. We are at 58%. Of those have completed their series. So what we figure is there's, based on that 19 census, there's 12,236 individuals, and of that, 7,100 have completed their series. And so if my calculations are right, that's about 58%.
And who's, who's going to be continuing to try to reach out to that, that group so they don't get lost?
Well, you know, I know that the clinics continue to do that, but also, they're more than welcome to, you know, call our number and come here if they need to, or the pharmacies. Again, they can get, they can go to multiple places to get their vaccine.
I just worry that once, once all of the walls are down, the floods will come. the floods will come and those people who haven't had a chance to be vaccinated yet, who are above sixty-five, will get left behind.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and we can continue to maybe reach out to them on our website. A couple of things I didn't mention that we're working on as well is I did get groups from the Medicaid in relationship to those that may be homebound. So, we're going through seeing who's had their vaccine and who hasn't. And then I'm hoping I'll schedule, you know, either six or ten, depending on what type of vaccine we use, and we'll go out and we'll administer them. Also going to start administering some of those maybe through my home health agency, if we can get it all scheduled so we can reach those individuals. I know Teresa went out yesterday to a home. The other folks we have reached out to is the immigrant population. I do know we've been working with one of the ministers here in town. So, those individuals will be coming into our clinic. And then I have a meeting set up this week with the Immigrant Coalition to set up something with them as well to make sure that those individuals don't get left behind too. So, those are some other folks that we've been working with as well.
And there's no requirement that they have documentation of their status or anything?
No, no, what we're going to do is we just need names. They'll probably like that. We do need an address for our system, but they can use the church address if they need to. So, yeah, we'll make it as easy as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les, for your time and all your work. And I think we're kind of seeing a light at the end of this very long tunnel. Not not super close yet, but definitely making strides towards towards that end of that tunnel. And thank you for all that you've done.
Yes, we are. And thank you. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Right. Next, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. We have the three nine twenty-one, nineteen school district canvas and the three sixteen twenty twenty, three sixteen twenty twenty-one minutes.
I'm going to approve.
Second. It's the move by Faisal, second by Merkin, Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headen's aye. Next is consideration of personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move that way through personnel actions as listed.
Second.
The move by Merkin and second is by Faisal. Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Headen's aye. Next is the consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from the consent agenda? Don't believe so. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will be approving consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The move by Faisal, second by Merkin. Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headen's aye. Next, we're down to additional items. We have discussion and consideration of Herta's update on authorized expanded use asset funding for public transportation. And we've got Sandra King here, and I did see that Brooke, yeah, there you are. Brooke is now up on our Zoom.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
And just introducing Brooke Ramsey to provide an update on the authorized expand expanded use of asset funds to cover city of Ames trips.
Great. We'll turn it over to you, Brooke.
Good morning. We had a PowerPoint.
On the agenda, yep.
There we go. If we maybe go to the third slide there.
Third?
Yeah. There we go. So, just a quick update on the VanPul program. We don't currently have any employer agreements in place. There were four of the larger employers the enterprise was working to meet with. We do have two new team members on our enterprise team, which I think slowed things down a little bit. We do have a meeting with them. We haven't met them yet, but we have a meeting with them later this week, so that'll be Thursday.
Brooke, when you say a meeting with them, who are you referring to?
The new, our new contact at Enterprise. Next slide. I know that this is something just for, you know, to see at a glance here, the trips that we've done under asset funding in the city of Ames and in Story County so far this fiscal year. And just a reminder that those July through October rides were paid for with the City of Ames Asset Fund. So, the first county claim was in November. And we are seeing some more ridership happening, which may go into what Les was just talking about with having more people being vaccinated, feeling more comfortable, and cases being lower as well in the community. Could also be that the weather's been a little bit better, getting out of that tough cold stint we went through in January and February as well. So, the next slide. Just a quick update on where we've been at with some of those Ames riders. We have been meeting every two weeks with CyRide and their staff. We initially identified thirty-six people who we thought should be eligible under the Dial-A-Ride or Paratransit Program. We've done both personal phone calls and multiple mailers to those individuals. We have only received, and when I say we, I actually mean CyRide, it's their application. They've only received five applications from those thirty-six people. They've all been approved and moved over to the Dial-A-Ride service. We have had an additional five new riders that weren't riding before, that have recently been approved as well. CyRide was working with Heartland Senior Services. They're going to have some of their volunteers put some door hangers out in the community, just kind of talking about what that paratransit service is. And we're working with them to do joint presentations at some of the senior living facilities. For example, there's the Rose in Ames. So, we're working to get on as a maybe like a lunchtime activity to do a presentation to talk about how people can actually start using the fixed route service. You know, if they maybe need to be using paratransit service. And just in our system, it looks like they're ambulatory and and wouldn't maybe qualify, but they possibly have another type of need. We did also identify seventy-seven people who are Ames residents who have been writing on a donation basis. These are people who are all over the age of sixty. So, they're doing things like going to the grocery store and going to doctor's appointments. And we see that those donations are very, very low. I think last year, when we presented to the to your board, we had done an average and across the county, it ended up being like six cents per person was the donation. So, when you think of those donation rights, think of those as essentially writing it very little to no cost. And then we also found ninety people who were writing under the general public funding, meaning that they're writing and paying that two dollar and fifty cent fare. We did receive notice from the city of Ames that they will be increasing our asset funds by five percent for fiscal twenty-two. That certainly doesn't cover the whole gap that we have, although it it will help a little bit, get us a little further. If we want to maybe move to the next slide. Thank you. So, Herta has talked a little bit internally about developing some parameters on the types of rides that we provide in the city of Ames, understanding that the city, you know, already has a transit levy that goes to fund CyRide. They already have the fixed route service, and they already have paratransit services available. So, the asset funds that the city is providing to Herta to provide services there are really more of a stopgap measure. And what what do those parameters look like? And who or how are those services going to continue to be provided next year? That's something that will be on Herta's board agenda for this week. We have a board meeting on Thursday, and we anticipate there will be a pretty lengthy conversation about that. We want to continue to work collaboratively with CyRide. Obviously, we want to make sure that people are aware of any changes and have time to make a plan. If Herta, if there are people that Herta isn't going to continue to be able to serve within the city and continue on those joint travel training efforts, such as those community education, where we go to the senior living facilities and places like that and let them know there are other options as well. There, you know, if they're uncomfortable riding fixed route, maybe there's a way we can help train them to become comfortable using that service. So, we do have night over nineteen thousand dollars left that the county allowed Herta to allocate for Ames rides that will help cover what we've been doing in March. And we anticipate in April, following our our board, the Herta Board meeting later this week, we should have some more information, and we'll be in touch with Sandra about potentially coming back before the Board of Supervisors next month to see what our next step should be. At this time, we we didn't request any additional funding from the county for fiscal twenty-two to be moved, because we just don't have enough information right now. We weren't prepared to make that request today. The next slide. Some more updates about what Herta has been doing, and I apologize, I thought Julia might hop on here. We did receive some stimulus funds. I know we explained that to the your board before about the CARES funding. We are the state of Iowa, the Iowa DOT, has received some stimulus funds from the second package, which is the PRISA funding. We do, Herta does not currently have any of those funds yet. They're still outlining the parameters of some of those funds. And then most recently, the aid package that was released in April, I think they're calling it ARPA, the A R P A. That one, I know there's some transit funding involved, but we have not heard from the Iowa DOT if any of that funding will come to Herta, or if that will be capital only, if that will be operating only. We just don't have enough information about that at this time. We have been working with our Mobility for All Grant. We have Danny, who is our mobility and outreach specialist. He's worked on redoing our website, making that available in multiple languages. We've been working to have a lot of our new materials refreshed and translated into other languages as well, doing things like the travel training and really getting the information out to the public. We did submit a grant to the Iowa DOT. It was a funding that they received from the Iowa Developmental Disabilities Council, federal funding to help provide transportation for people with disabilities. So, that project is Barriers to Transit Equity for People with Disabilities. Essentially, that is a unmet needs assessment. And that project starts next week. It is a pretty fast-paced project, because those federal funds that the IDBC used need to be expended before the end of the federal fiscal year, which is the end of September. So, Herta has engaged the Easter Sales Project Action Consulting Group to go ahead and facilitate this project for our region. We have invited some representatives and community partners, as well as some of our actual writers who have disabilities to participate in the process. And we're excited to see the outcome of this. We will get like a living, breathing document that will be an action plan that everyone is involved in that process. And then the ITS for Us Complete Trip Project is a federally funded project as well, where we are working with our software vendor route match and some additional partners to develop an application where people can schedule their healthcare appointment and their transportation at the same time. That application will be available in over forty different languages. And we'll also include a wayfinding software. So, for example, if they have an appointment at Mary Greeley, and they don't necessarily know how to get to the radiology department, the application would help them maneuver throughout the building. So, it really helps them focus on the complete trip, not just the transportation of getting from home to the facility itself. It's getting through that whole entire process. So, we've started that. We're pretty excited to to move forward.
Thank you for your presentation. Brooke, I'll ask my colleagues for questions.
So, Brooke, this is London, Merkin. Was it, and I'm going to be after your slide, you said there were thirty-six people who were determined could be eligible for paratransit. Only five have been moved over. What are you doing? Let's follow up with the rest of those to get those people onto paratransit.
Yeah, it's, we were surprised that more people weren't willing to take the time to fill out the application. When we've called them, we've tried walking them through it over the phone. But at the end of the day, they do have to submit that application. They have to sign it and submit that. We've, you know, offered to print them out, mail them the application. You know, we have CyRide staff has said they have applications available at their office if, you know, printing is an issue. We've mailed them copies. We've mailed them letters. We've made multiple attempts. And out of the thirty-six people, only five people have actually filled out the application and submitted that. And that that's as of Friday. I don't know if they've received one today.
So, Brooke, when you're on the line, kind of on the same on the same topic as Supervisor Merkin was just asking about. So, when you're on the phone with somebody, can you fill out the applica, I mean, getting the information? You fill out the application and then send it to them to where they just need to sign, maybe, you know, in a stamped envelope so that they don't even need to do that?
Yeah, we've we've done that, and only five of the applications have been turned into CyRide.
So, with the thirty-one, what what's going on with them? Are they still writing, or are they? What what are they doing?
Yeah, there, I mean, there's a mixture. Some people, right now during the pandemic, you know, people aren't writing like they used to. But there there's kind of a mixed a mixture of people who, some of them are just writing as they need to. Some of them have reoccurring appointments and things of that nature. But, you know, we've talked about giving a deadline, saying this has to be done by a certain date, or this option is no longer available to you. You know, we, it's not that we don't want to provide the service. We need to make sure that the funding is coming from the most appropriate source. And in this case, if they should qualify for paratransit because they have a disability, we want to get them moved over to that source. We've, we understand that transportation funding is complicated, and people don't always like to give out information over the phone, even though they know us and they're familiar with our staff. It's just, it's been a lot slower of a process than we anticipated. We thought it would be much easier.
You can't say, unless you do this and take take advantage of that funding, you can't have your rides funded some other way. You can't ride, correct?
We can, you know, if there's, if we don't have the funding in place to provide the service, you know, we can set parameters. And and I think that's where Julia had put that on our board agenda to say, you know, this is a conversation that we need to have at Herta and say, this is something that we need to to put in place and, you know, really, I don't want to say set a policy on, but really set the guidance to say, this is what we're going to do moving forward.
So, the thirty-one remaining, what what do they pay? Are they are they paying now, or how how are they being charged?
Yep, they're writing under the general public fare, so they're paying the two dollars and fifty cents per trip. And they could be writing, paying two dollars, but they would have to fill out the application.
So, when I look at the CyRide website for Dial-A-Ride, general public is eighteen dollars.
No, they're, their fare is, the paratransit fare can't be more than twice the fixed route. So, the Dial-A-Ride fare is two dollars each way.
Right, so the non-ADA eligible. So, until they fill out, I I'm just trying to understand, until they fill out the application. are they under the umbrella of just general public because they haven't completed the application? Or?
So if they're not writing, if they're not writing under the paratransit program, then they're writing under Herta's service. And then they would be paying Herta's general public fare, which in Ames would be two dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you for clearing that up for me. So how do you, how do you identify or when people get on as to which riders are paying for what service? So they, they have like a little, like a, almost like a bus pass or some sort of ticket or something that's kind of color-coded. What, how is that identified?
So we'll use, uh, we'll use Lisa as an example. Let's say Lisa schedules a ride and Lisa's approved to ride under the Dial-A-Ride program. So in Herta's software system, that's identified. And that's where you would, where your trip would be reported and billed to is under that program. In some riders' cases, they have multiple places that they go or they have multiple funding sources. So for example, we have a paratransit rider who for a while was needing to get treatments for wound care in Boone. And so while she was taking her trips within the city of Ames, she was riding under the paratransit service. But when she would leave the city, that's not a paratransit service anymore. That's Herta's services. So those trips between Ames and Boone were riding under Herta's services. And that was all tracked separately that our software program allows for that. So once we have you scheduled in the system, then by the time you get on the bus, the driver, I mean, really what they're just seeing is just that we're picking Lisa up and at this address and taking Lisa to this address. And if she needs to pay a fare or does not, you know, maybe Lisa has a Medicaid piece for her rides or something of that nature. So she would have a zero fare, her fare would be two dollars or two fifty. But you wouldn't necessarily show a, a paratransit card every time you got onboard the bus.
Okay, okay. Do the, do the drivers collect the fares or are people billed for that?
We don't bill individuals because we just have too many customers and we only have one accounting person. But we, we do allow people to buy prepaid tickets. They can pay with cash, they can pay with a check. We also offer a prepaid account. So for example, you can log into a website similar to how school lunch accounts work and you can load, let's say, ten or twenty dollars on the account. And then as you take your rides, that money is deducted from that account. And it shows all of the rider activity. So, you know, that's great, especially for health or for caregivers. If they're caring for a parent or a child, they can track all of that, all of the person's activity and see how those, that money was used.
I heard that you were considering eliminating fares.
So we we, during the pandemic, we went fare-free from April through July, which many transit systems did. And that was part of what the CARES funding was intended to do, was to help transit systems make up the difference of lost revenue, you know, contract services and passage revenues and things of that nature. And through that process, there's been a nationwide conversation about the time it takes transit systems to collect the fares because the drivers have to collect it. Then there has to be reconciliation, counting the fares, chain of custody. You know, all of these internal control procedures you would have for accounting of any cash that you would receive, of course. So Herta submitted a project to Iowa State under their CyBiz Labs or their MBA students. And they are doing a study to see what the true cost is of collecting fares. And to take a look at, you know, is that something that we need to look at considering in the future if we should be fare-free or not? Typically, you see fare-free systems, like Kansas City is an example. And that's something that through their transit levy, they've been able to offset the difference in the passenger fares versus going fare-free. But Herta, because we're not exclusive to one municipality, we're a regional system, we don't have a transit levy like that to rely on. So it's a little more complicated for us to make that consideration.
So are you suggesting that you would reduce staff costs if you went fare-free and that's how you would make up the difference?
We're not sure right now. You know, we've, we've been tracking the time it takes the drivers, supervisors and the accountant to collect and reconcile. And I mean, even time it takes at the bank to process those deposits is much different than a normal business would have. And just their, you know, checks that come in the mail, as an example. But we just aren't sure. The project wraps up next month. I think their presentation is, I think it's April twelfth if I remember correctly. So we'll, we'll know more soon.
I would just think that you would need to make sure, you know, that, you know, you would have savings on the, on the staffing end that would more than compensate for not collecting that money or that you have, maybe there's efficiencies that you can do make the staff time less onerous. Because I'd hate to see it be, well, we're not going to collect fares, we'll have, we'll have to ask for more money next year because we're, we decided not to collect fares.
Yeah, and that, that isn't, our intention is to pass the burden of that lost revenue on. It's more of to study what is that cost to Herta? And, and if we should be doing something differently. And as an example of that, we have the online accounts where people can prepay for their trips. There are transit systems in Iowa that have looked at going away from cash handling and requiring riders to use that type of a system to, to load money on the account and prepay for it in an effort to reduce cost in other areas. So I think we've got, we've got a lot of opportunities for conversation around the fares and how we process the fares. But it was a good opportunity to, with the Iowa State students. It's, it's always good to work with the university and the students. They bring a fresh perspective. But it's a good time to kind of do that analysis right now.
I've got a couple more questions for you, Brooke. So you're talking about the seventy-seven that are riding under a donation basis and the very minimal amount that you're giving out. So if you know that, I mean, how are you going about encouraging folks to, who can pay more? To give a greater donation, I mean, can you, have you looked at, are you kind of looking at reassessing? Could they be on like a sliding fee scale, you know, based on what they can or cannot pay versus doing a donation? Or, or what? Because what did you say about six cents with your average?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what it was last year when we looked at, I don't, I don't remember. I don't know if you remember this or not, but we had received a reduction in funds from Aging Resources of Central Iowa. And so that was brought to the Board of Supervisors' attention and we came and talked about that. And then the county ended up providing the difference in the funding. So at that time, we looked at what we, what we were receiving in donations and I think it was about six cents per trip. And that, again, that's across the whole county, not just the city of Ames. So those Ames riders who are riding on a donation basis, those are going to be kind of that same population. They're riding under that Aging Resources funding, which again, doesn't fund the whole cost of the trip. It requires a match. And really, it only covers a couple of dollars per trip. It's not paying even fifty percent of the cost of that. So it, it's not that we don't want to provide the service, we do. But there's, every funding source has their own unique requirements and Aging Resources does want us to solicit donations, but we can't require them. We've tried different things like posting signs on the buses that say, this is the cost of the trip and this is what we suggest you donate. We didn't see an increase in donations from any of those efforts.
So it kind of goes back to Aging Resources is what it sounds like you're saying, to see if they would look at the language to say instead of, you know, you could encourage the donations that also give you the latitude to institute like a sliding fee scale or something. Is that what I'm kind of hearing from you?
Yeah, we worked with them on that. It was, sorry, it seems like everything was during the pandemic and before the pandemic, there's not a good measure of time anymore. But we did work on them. I think that was in fiscal year nineteen that, that we talked with them. But I do know they are putting out their RFP in November and they had to do a draft report to the state. And they've talked about doing some things differently with transportation. They proactively told us they may be reducing the type, you know, the amount of funding they give Herta next year through the RFP process. So we can visit with Margaret again and see if there's, you know, more latitude than what we took before. But it is something that we had previously discussed with her.
So summarize again, if you would, what it is that the issues that your board will be looking at before you come back to talk with us.
So we have a board meeting on Thursday this week. So pull the agenda up real quick. But we do have an item on there about the Ames transportation. The city of Ames trips and fifty-three eleven funding with an option to take action. So there should be supplemental information for the board, including a little bit of a backstory about the fifty-three eleven funds and using them in urban versus non-urban settings. And just again, looking at maybe some parameters for who or how rights can be taken. If, you know, they want to look at putting some restrictions, for example, you know, only certain trip purposes. Or do we want to look at having some type of qualification process? You know, I guess it's kind of an open topic, we, you know, to have with the board.
So I've not been on Herta Board before, so translate for me, fifty-three eleven funding.
Oh, sorry. Fifty-three eleven funds are the type of federal funds that Herta receives and they're considered non-urban funding. CyRide receives fifty-three oh seven funds to provide their fixed route service. And that's because they're in an area that has a population of more than fifty thousand people. And then they also receive fifty-three ten funds, which is what they use to, to provide their paratransit service. So through our contract with CyRide, Herta does receive those fifty-three ten funds from CyRide, but CyRide gets them directly.
So we did a, what was it, kind of a flop or something or you liked our, can you just do a kind of a quick reminder on that? Because that would have been pre-supervisor Faisal being on and pre-me being on the board or on the Herta Board and stuff. So it's still a relatively new program or concept that, that was done.
It's complicated for people who are in transit too sometimes. So what we, what we did is we requested that the county allow us to use some of our asset funding to provide services in the city of Ames. And we moved our federal funding from the city of Ames over to just the county so that we would ensure that we were in compliance. Because those fifty-three eleven funds specifically say non-urban funding. And this was a topic that didn't just come up with Ames. It's a nationwide topic that happened. There was a transit system in another state that was receiving urban and non-urban funding. But they weren't providing any services in the rural areas. And once that happened, the Iowa, Iowa DOT took a look at the state and said, there are several areas in the state of Iowa that this could be happening as well. And Herta is just one of them because we provide service in and out of Ames and in Ames, but there's other parts of the state of Iowa that are affected as well. So we're just trying to be proactive and make sure that we are doing everything in compliance and meeting all of the regulatory requirements that we can.
So it wasn't more money from the county, it was just moving some funds around and using them differently?
Yeah, correct. It was just how we allocated those dollars within our budget.
What were you anticipating asking today and you kind of deferred doing that?
We weren't planning on asking for anything today when, because when, when Supervisor Olson was leaving the board at the end of December was the last time we really came and presented and did any update. And at that time, knowing there would be a new supervisor, the board had requested that we continue to give Sandra updates on how things were and stay in contact, which we have. And then follow up, you know, probably in February or March, having a new supervisor. Hopefully she, you know, got up to speed a little bit by then. I know that's a lot to do in a couple of months, especially during budget season. So that's what we were doing today is we were just coming back kind of as an update to let everyone know where we were at, what we've worked on and, and what our next steps were to be.
But Supervisor Marcus, I thought you made reference to an ask. I thought you said something about an ask, but you're going to wait till like next month. I think that's what she's asking for clarification on.
Yeah, because I had first understood you were going to be, have an ask today of some additional funds. And so what are you looking at?
I don't think we, we don't have anything to ask today. We, we still have, so the county had, had allowed Herta to move sixty-five thousand dollars over to continue to provide services in the city of Ames. And of that, we still have nineteen thousand to use in March and then I anticipate April as well. So I do think in April, we will come back, we're quest to come back. You know, probably with another update, but with more information after our next board meeting as well to say, you know, here's where we're at with things. And if we need to move, you know, to request to move additional funds to get us through the fiscal year, to give us time to you know, maybe notify the existing writers of upcoming changes and things of that nature. That would give us a couple of months to, to get that done and accomplish that. But at this time, I don't know what that would look like. I know initially, earlier in the fiscal year, less in the fall, Sandra and I had kind of looked at the numbers and I thought maybe seventy-nine thousand might be needed to get through the whole entire fiscal year twenty-one. And, and then what we ended up settling on was just to try and get through March because of you having a new board member. And Laura wanted to make sure that, you know, the new board was making those decisions.
I don't know, my supervisor has another question. I do have another one in regards to the grant. And I think the grant is in regards to the barriers to transit for people with disabilities. I'm not sure. I think was it that like around forty thousand or forty-nine thousand or something? And that's to do the assessment is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, it's not something, and I do remember we did talk about this a little bit at our last board meeting. I wasn't kind of connecting it all together. Because I've only been at two board meetings so far, so, so trying to get up to speed. So that's the assessment that you're doing for our region with that, those dollars. And then if I recall from our conversation at our last board meeting, it's helping it to a point where the other regions could look that it could be replicated statewide.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Correct.
They approved some money at SERPA for an additional grant there. Do you have more than just that forty-four thousand through Easter Seals? Because SERPA approved a match for a grant, was it Disability Services?
So it was the same grant. SERPA was providing twenty-five hundred dollars in local match on, on that federal funding. So we did receive some federal funds, then there's some state funds and the funds from SERPA.
So there are all three of those total forty-four thousand?
All right, so, so SERPA's funds were the local funds, we need to be able to draw it down.
Yes, correct.
And all, and all of those funds are for the, the, uh, assessment?
Correct.
Other questions, supervisors?
I think that, I'm waiting if you're, I think that's all that we have for questions right now. We may have some additional that either myself will gather from my colleagues and forward to maybe to Sandra or forward directly to you. Kelly will have more information from my colleagues after the board meeting on Thursday. Uh, and stuff, and we'll look, definitely look forward to having you come back then with more information.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the update today. I appreciate it. The discussion, yeah.
Right, sounds like she wants to come back in April though, so.
Potentially, yeah, yeah. If she needs to, yeah, re, it sounds like if, if they want to move around some dollars again, that, that then that would be rest to consider.
And the fund she's referencing moving around dollars from is that 110,868 asset funds?
Oh, okay, would be the asset fund, well, probably similar to what she's.
Right, right, so the remaining amount that she referenced, the 19,000 and something, um, remaining on the city of Ames trips. And then there's about 35,000 or so remaining on the county funds.
Gotcha, 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 okay, okay. Thanks for that, that update. Okay, next, we have no departmental reports or other reports. Upcoming agenda items, whether we have anything upcoming agenda items? Okay, this is the time for public comment or public forum, uh, number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. I will open this time if anyone would like to make public comments. If you'd like to, please raise your hand via Zoom or hit star nine to unmute yourself. Wait just a few seconds. Because I know sometimes we have issues with people being able to unmute her. And I'm not seeing anything, so I will close the public comment time at this time. Uh, next up liaison assignments, committee meetings, updates and announcements from supervisor. Supervisor Faisal?
Um, yeah, uh, so we've got the sheriff's office recognition this afternoon. Um, special conference board meeting this afternoon, city of Ames annexation meeting. Are we, are we all supposed to go to that or?
No, I, I, I just think that is an FYI. Because my understanding is I thought that was what we got on their mailing was information that they were having, having that topic or discussion was on their meeting tonight.
Yes, so, okay, okay. Um, and then Wednesday, ISAC Spring Conference General Session. And then there's also a NACO broadband task force meeting at the exact same time. So I'm hoping to get the recording of that. Thursday, I've just got lots of Zoom meetings. And Friday, there's us, um, an extra meeting for Story County Housing Trust Fund. Got Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center meeting. And, um, I am attending a rural housing readiness assessment here in Nevada. That is all I have.
Okay, um, broadband, for the broadband study, um, groups have continued to meet. On Monday, the, um, regional promotions, uh, some work group of the story committee met. And got a lot of materials to, um, send out. Uh, we don't know if we've got the final link yet. They worked on a lot of materials to send out to make sure that everybody knows about the broadband study. I think it's going to actually go live, uh, this Thursday at noon. And hopefully we'll have some things out there by then. Um, but we also have about a month. It'll be out there about a month. They're going to be tracking, um, the responses they get. I don't know if they can do it by census check or how they, how they exactly do it. But they'll let us know if we've got some various areas of the county that we're not getting a lot of surveys from. So we might try to do some extra efforts, um, in those areas. Um, it's going to be really exciting to actually get this going. Uh, so I'm real interested in, I, I might check with you on that, when the NACO, um, web, webinar is, because I want to get more information on that. I don't think I've got that in this, I've got several broadband things, but that's not one of them. Also, the rural housing readiness assessment this Friday, I'm going to be attending that as well. Some other board meetings, um, and, um, we've, um, we're looking into edge of field practices and what's for, um, water quality, what Story County can do to assist in those. A meeting with several stakeholders on that. And what else? AAMPO meeting is tonight at 6 o'clock and I'll be on that just before the city council meeting. And we also have, oh, we're, we've got more interviews for Veterans Affairs Commissioner. We're getting, we should have that done by the end of the month. So lots going on right now.
Yep, I have the sheriff's recognition, the Ames Special Conference. I have a special ARC meeting this evening as well. Um, I have on my calendar CCMT tomorrow morning. Um, the ISAC conference Thursday, I have heard of, which sounds like will be a long meeting. Uh, and then I have the CICS meeting in the afternoon. And then ISAC also has their final, that Thursday afternoon, uh, that I put on my calendar. Um, it's up, um, at this particular time. But to be looking at, I should also add that on Thursday evening, I will be joining with the emergency management that's doing kind of, I believe, an overview with some of the mayors and stuff. I believe you two are doing it the following weekend via Zoom. And I'm doing the in-person one or, or whichever works in every, in everybody's schedule.
Which day, which day?
I believe I am doing the emergency management the 25th. But I know there was tonight, or Thursday night from 7:00 to 8:30. And that was the in-person one, but I believe there was one, a different.
Zoom is March 25th and in-person is March 30th. And I said I would do the one on the 30th.
I thought I had it switched around. So I thought it was, I thought in-person was on the 25th. You're doing the 30th, right?
I think I was doing the 30th, but I'm kind of making on my calendar.
Okay, so the 25th is Zoom? I put a sort of the other way around.
I copied it out to my calendar.
Well, we can look afterwards, but, um,
We need to do the shit.
Yes, yes, I was thinking it was the other way, other way around. So it sounds like we are all very busy with our calendars coming up. And, uh, I have Monday, Monday is booked as, as well. So at least we have an idea of kind of what's going on. So return that time for adjournment. And before we adjourn, I do just want to make a comment or recognize the tragedies that have happened. Um, actually a week ago today, um, in Atlanta and then last night, um, in Boulder, Colorado. Um, and just certainly want to give my condolences out to the family and friends of all of those that are affected. And, um, hope that our leaders at the national and state levels could certainly look further as to how we can continue to minimize the level of hate and crimes that are going, that are going on. It's certainly sad to see, um, these continued efforts throughout our country.
I, I would also like to express my, my condolences and, um, my heartfelt sadness for everyone who has lost a loved one to violence the past, um, week or so. And, um, also just to our Asian community, both here in Story County and outside of Story County. Um, I just want to say that, um, I don't know if I can say it for me or for all of us, but, um, I see you. And I know that this is not new, uh, for your community. And, um, that I plan to support you in any way possible moving forward. Uh, I'm grateful to have you in this big, beautiful country.
I, um, lack the attitude and I agree with everything that the other two supervisors have said. I'm also concerned that we have so many incidents of mass shootings and gun violence in this country. And we, um, aren't doing the things that we need to do. And I think we need some political courage at this point. Um, because we keep having incidents, we keep saying, our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims. And, and I hear from people who are in, in, um, positions to strengthen laws, I don't hear a call for that. And I'm calling for it. We need to strengthen our laws. We need to do everything we can to keep this from happening. We went a year without gun violence. We went a year without any mass shootings until a week ago in this country. I think that's awfully interesting. Thank you. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, uh, Faisal, I'm working on, Kevin, I, we are adjourned.
Thank you. And I just looked up your crack, the 25th is Zoom. I just, this read.